Good evening, it is seven thirty-three and I will call to order the September twelfth meeting of the Norwalk Common Council. If you please join me in pledging allegiance to our flag and please remain standing after. Fledge.
I pledge allegiance to the plan of the United States of America. And to the republic which is in our hands. Think of this law when it reaches its end.
As most of you know. That we've lost a very. Respected man in the city of Norwalk, Attorney Lou Chicorillo passed away this past week. Attorney Chicorillo was also a former state senator. Involved himself in many of the city's activities, served on various boards for various charitable organizations. Well respected and he also served as Corporation Counsel under the Knop administration. He's been a longtime Norwalk resident, very, very visible here at City Hall for many, many years. And really love the city of Norwalk and he will be sadly missed, so I'd like to ask for a moment of silence in his memory. Thank you. Mr. Dixon, would you please call the role?
Mr. Burnett.
President.
Mr. Camacho.
I'm here.
Mr. Goldstein.
Here.
Ms. Nagelski, Ms. Nagelski Eichner, present. Ms. Smith, here. Ms. Ayers.
Here.
Mr. Uveman. Ms. Revolus. Ms. Young. Mr. Kites.
Here.
Ms. McMur, present. Ms. Ultraman. Mr. Meek.
Here.
Ms. Shanahan.
Here.
Mr. Frayer.
Yeah.
Mr. Goldstein. Mr. You.
Here.
Oh, thank you. Mr. Uveman. Ms. Revolus. Young. Ms. Ultraman. We have eleven, we have a quorum.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is acceptance of the minutes of the regular meeting of. August eighth, two thousand twenty-three. Do I have a motion? Ms. McMur. Any corrections, deletions, omissions?
I had one small correction.
Ms. Nagelski Eichner?
Thank you. And on page. All right, now off the page. Apologies. On page. Two of the meeting minutes, excuse me, page three of the meeting minutes from the special meeting. There was a commentary assigned to me that I believe was actually commentary by Ms. Ayers. So look on page three of the August fifteenth minutes. The last paragraph of that.
Over on the regular meeting of August eighth?
Oh, my apologies.
That's okay.
Thank you, sorry.
Are there any corrections, deletions or omissions? Seeing none, all in favor of the minutes as submitted?
Yes.
Opposed? And abstentions? Ms. Shanahan has abstaining? Any other abstentions or? Opposition? Okay, motion passes. Next is a special meeting of August fifteenth, two thousand twenty-three. Do I have a motion? Ms. Shanahan? Yes, Ms. Nagelski Eichner?
My apologies again. So I'm sorry, on page three of those minutes. And the last paragraph of that, I believe, was Ms. Ayers' comments, not mine, I believe.
Any further corrections, deletions or omissions? All in favor of approving the minutes as corrected?
Yes.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries? Next item on the agenda is public participation. Ms. Dixon?
Um, we have Moynan Nor. Good evening, members of the Common Council and Mayor Rilling. My name is Moynan Nor and I live at fifteen Pequot Drive. I'm here as President of the Board of Directors of the Norwalk Public Library. I'm joined by two fellow board members in person, Patsy Bresha and Geraldo Williams. I'm not sure if there's anyone else online. I'd like to express my wholehearted support and gratitude for the city's plan to acquire the quarter acre parking lot at eleven Beldon Avenue, which is part of tonight's land use section of the agenda. The acquisition of the parking lot is a necessary step for our library's renovation plans. Having adequate free parking at the library is not merely a matter of convenience, it's a matter of inclusivity and accessibility, particularly for seniors and parents with young children who frequently use our services. All of our patrons deserve hassle-free access to all that our library offers. I'm grateful that the city initiated a lease for thirty parking spaces at the Eagles Lot next door. However, this is a temporary solution. The renovation and expansion of our library is a multi-generational, once-in-a-lifetime investment for the residents of Norwalk. For the long term, we need a dedicated parking solution on a contiguous parcel of land to kickstart the next phase of the library's development. Thank you so much for your attention and care for this matter.
Thank you, Ms. Nor.
Mr. Geraldo Williams?
Hello, Geraldo Williams, sixty-two Bain Street. I'm here in support of everything that was just said. I'm a recent member, recent appointee on the library board. And I'm just here to endorse what was said by Moynan. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Williams.
Ms. Patsy Bresha?
Good evening, Council members and Mayor. Rilling, I'm here again this evening to just to support again the and emphasize the importance of this effort. Getting to this point has been a long struggle that many of us have been involved with for some ten or more years and for the significance of the ability to provide this a new wonderful facility improvement to our library. It is also such an important endeavor for the development of Wall Street. After the devastation of the flood in fifty-six, Wall Street has never been what it was and I think of the library expansion and development that this this kind of parking and land opportunity will provide will be an enormous economic engine for the Wall Street card. So I thank you very much for your support.
Thank you, Ms. Bresha. Any, is there anybody online that wishes to address the council?
If you are remote and you wish to address the council, please raise your hand electronically now. And I will unmute you. Uh, for the record, please keep your comments to three minutes and state your name and address. Thank you.
Seeing none, we'll close public participation. Next item on the agenda, resignations and appointments. First one, resignation of Mr. Peter Halliday from the Fair Rent Commission. The reason, as an alternate, the reason he is resigning is because he's, we're proposing that he move up to the position of Fair Rent Commissioner Regular. If I can have a motion? Ms. Smith?
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to move the appointment of Peter Halliday to the Fair Rent Commission. I got to know Mr. Halliday on the campaign trail a number of years ago and he is a kind and giving man. He has been a Norwalk resident for over forty years. He is a US Army veteran, an avid volunteer in our classrooms, particularly at Cranberry Elementary. He volunteers with Meals on Wheels. And he serves on his condominium board. He and I also share a background in, in media. He is a, an air sportscaster and newscaster. And he is just really a good and kind man and he has been serving as an alternate. And I thank him for his willingness to serve as a regular commissioner.
Thank you. Any further discussion or comment? Seeing none, all in favor? Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries unanimously. Next, the appointment of Jay Hanson Guest for the Fair Rent Commission Alternate. Do I have a motion? Mr. Burnett?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to move for Hanson Guest to be an alternate on the Fair Rent Commission. Mr. Mr. Guest is a attorney by profession. He's been involved in several real estate properties and the resident in Norwalk. And his professional experience as well as his dedication to serving the community will be extremely valuable to the Fair Rent Commission, so I totally endorse Mr. Guest becoming an alternate to the Fair Rent Commission.
Thank you. Any further discussion or comment? Seeing none, all in favor? Uh, I thought I heard something.
I think that's Josh saying yes, but he went digital.
It was Josh saying yes.
All right, uh, any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries unanimously. Next, we have several appointments to the Fair Rent Commission. I suggest that we move them all together, the first one being John Church, Ms. Fran Collier Clemens, Lunice Constant, Brenda Penn Williams, Johnny May Weldon, Sonia Oliver, Samuel Pride and Dora Witherspoon. Do I have a motion? Mr. Josie Eichner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I'm pleased to move for the reappointment of this strong group of commissioners who have been serving on the Fair Rent Commission and will be continuing their excellent work. I want to really highlight what an excellent collection of involved Norwalk citizens we have here, people with long histories of serving their community and their neighborhoods. I'm going to call out Lunice Constant, who I had the pleasure of meeting recently, who is one of our youngest and newest commission members and brings a degree in human resources. And I just think it's a tremendous collection of people who are very dedicated to making sure that our citizens are treated fairly by their landlords, have the protections that they deserve under law. So I'm pleased to move their reappointments.
Thank you. Any further comment? Ms. McMur?
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to reiterate what my colleague Nora Naljuski-Eichner has said. I wanted to call out a few other names as well. John Church is a good friend of mine and wonderful and has been serving on this board. Brenda Penn Williams, Johnny May Weldon, both in my district and serving the community in Constant as well as Sam Pride. And the word that comes to my mind when I think about all these people is fair. And I think that's apropos for this commission, of course, being the Fair Rent Commission, so I am pleased to move them forward as well.
Thank you. Further discussion or comment? Seeing none, all in favor? Opposed? Mr. Meek is opposed? Abstentions? See, all the motion carries? Next item on the agenda is two appointments to the Oak Hills Park Authority. Reappointments, thank you. Denise Brown and Jennifer McAllister, do I have a motion? Ms. McMur?
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to move forward Denise Brown and Jen McAllister for this position and speak to them. Denise Brown is someone who has vast bookkeeping, administrative and management skills and has been associated with Oak Hills in one capacity or another for some time. And Jen McAllister, who I know personally is a accomplished senior financial professional and has been a member of the Oak Hills Park Authority for some time as well. She's always solution-oriented and always asks insightful questions, which I think is really important to be a part of any commission, so I am proud to move both of these names forward.
Further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries unanimously. Brings us to my remarks. First of all, if you were able to come to the Vets Park event this past Sunday where we hosted the Shepherd, Shepherd's Men, as they arrived in Vets Park. They started their march at the State Veterans Memorial in Hartford's Minuteman Park. And they finished yesterday at one twenty-four Liberty Street in New York. They marched in twenty-two mile stints where they would carry, do a fireman carry for each other. They'd take turns carrying each other on their backs during the march. They are an organization that aims to bring awareness to the twenty-two veterans suicides every day. They provide free support, counseling for veterans of the Afghanistan and Iraqi wars. And they help with people maybe suffering from TBI or better known as traumatic brain injury or PTSD, post-traumatic stress disorder. It was an honor to have them there. We had a ceremony at the Purple Heart Memorial. They were very pleased with their welcome and I want to give a special shout out and thanks to Ms. Dixon here who did a remote, a remarkable job on helping to prepare and make this happen. And it was quite an event and they told their stories and they told stories about veterans and their troubles and all the things that veterans experience. So we were very appreciative to have them and hopefully we'll have them back again. Our final summer concert has been moved from Wednesday to Thursday because of the potential for rain. So our final, final concert is going to be Sensational Soul Cruisers. It's going to be at Thursday, Cat Pasture Beach, starting at seven thirty. It's hard to believe that our concert series is already over. I don't know how many of you have had an opportunity to go there, but I think I missed one, but they were really, really phenomenal. The people of the city were just entertained and had a great time and got to enjoy our beautiful beach, so we're going to start up again next year with another series of concerts and I'm sure that we'll have the same results. Last, we also have the final outdoor movie showing at Cat Pasture Beach this coming Friday at dusk. It'll be the last outdoor movie showing. They're going to be showing DC League Super Pets. Sounds like a good family event. Bring your children, bring your grandchildren. So and have a great time. Uh, last but not least, another recognition for one of our wonderful city employees, Deanna DiAmore, the Director of Health, has been recognized as one of forty, under forty in public health by the DeBohmont Foundation. Last week, I announced that our Norwalk Health Department Director was recognized after reviewing nominations from hundreds of professionals working to benefit state or local public health agencies across the United States. The DeBohmont Foundation announced that Deanna DiAmore was selected as a member of their class of two thousand twenty-three. Uh, the foundation creates and invests in bold solutions that improve public health in communities across the country. As you know or may not know, Deanna has been an outstanding leader in the city of Norwalk. Not only in the city of Norwalk, but she's gained recognition throughout the state of Connecticut and far beyond for her talent, for her skills, for her dedication. She has helped, she was a vital member of our team when we were navigating through COVID. She really was very skillful and helped us making our recommendations. She also led the, directed the national accreditation process leading to Norwalk being the first local health department in the state to receive national accreditation in two thousand and fourteen and then reaccreditation in two thousand and twelve. So I want to congratulate her on another award that she's received. She's received many and let's give her a nice round of applause. Mr. Burnett?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's exciting for me to, to announce that our Bike Walk Commission is engaging in an activity first time in Norwalk where we're submitting an application for the bicycle-friendly community here in Norwalk, which would be an outstanding honor if we were able to receive this award. And what the essence of what I wanted to announce is that part of the application process is a survey of Norwalk residents and that survey is open until October twentieth and we will be sending out additional information how Norwalk residents can complete the survey to, to help support our application and hopefully be one of a very few cities in the state of Connecticut to receive the Bicycle Friendly Community Award, so wanted to just kind of preempt that. More information will be coming forward and we hope that Norwalk residents participate in the survey. Um, moving on to our consent calendar for tonight, Councilmember Ed Camacho will be reading the consent calendar.
Good evening, all. It's a very long consent calendar, so and I'm remote, so let me know if you can. If you're having difficulty hearing me, I'll just turn off the the video feed and, and maybe that might help, but. Uh, okay, so the first item is item six A. Uh, it's Corporation Counsel. Number one, a discussion and authorization for resolution. Alfred Esposito and Raoul Al Durando Etta three, colon, twenty-two, SIF, six twenty-one MPS is the the index number for the case in that matter. Had been slated for executive session. Uh, but I believe it's on consent now, is that correct?
Right.
Okay. Uh, number seven, Common Council Committees. Seven A, Public Safety and General Government Committee. Authorized Mayor Harry W. Rilling to execute any and all agreements, documents, instruments and amendments thereto as may be necessary to apply for and accept grant funding under the fiscal year two thousand twenty-three Project State Neighborhoods Grant. Number two, authorize the Police Chief James Walsh to execute any and all documents and agreements as may, as may be necessary to implement the fiscal year two thousand twenty-three Project State Neighborhoods Grant. Number three, authorize the purchasing agent to issue a purchase order to Suffolk Marine CTR Incorporated for the purchase of two Yamaha F-250 NSV thirty DES R and L rotation outboard engines with the necessary electronic controls, gauges, harnesses and steering controls resulting from purchasing project four twenty-nine for our outboard engines for police boat rebid for a sum not to exceed ninety-one thousand, seven hundred and twenty-one dollars. Account noted. Uh, authorize the Mayor Harry W. Rilling to enter into an agreement with Morris and McDaniel Management Consultants, one seventeen South St. Uh, Staff Street, Alexandria, Virginia, two-two-three-one-four. Resulting from the purchasing project for three oh two consultant services for an entry-level firefighter selection process to develop and administer a firefighter entry-level examination or exam not to exceed the amount of ninety thousand dollars. Account noted. Item number six, authorize the Mayor Harry W. Rilling to execute any and all documents and agreements necessary to apply for and accept grant funding under fiscal year two thousand twenty-four uh, CT dot drug recognition support grant. Uh, DRE. Uh, item B, Finance and Claims Committee. Uh, Claims Committee, there is none. Number two, Narrative on Tax Collectives dated August twenty twenty-three. Receive reports and discuss. Item number three, Monthly Tax Collector's Reports dated July twenty twenty-three. Receive reports and discuss. Uh, item number four, authorize the purchasing agent to issue a purchase order to tell REPO in an amount not to exceed fifty-three thousand, four hundred and one dollars for purchase mobile devices, printers and miscellaneous equipment for police, for police patrol cars. Uh, tell REPO is a state of Connecticut, DAS, NASPO, Panasonic contract account noted. And there's not, well, that's not an account, so it's number fifteen PSX zero-two-two-one account noted. Uh, item five A, Resolution, authorize the allocation of two million nine hundred thousand in special capital appropriations for the Norwalk Public Schools for the acquisition of six properties abutting the proposed South Norwalk School. Uh, as I, as identified herein uh, this memo, the capital appropriation shall be funded through two million, nine hundred thousand of authorized but unissued general obligations, bonds or notes of the city. The two million, nine hundred dollars of bonds or notes of the city shall be issued in accordance with the provisions and terms set forth in the original bond resolutions that authorize the issuance of the bonds or notes of the city for project account noted. Item number five B, approve the deauthorization in the amount of two million, nine hundred dollars uh, from free balance in the Jefferson School Improvement Project Capital Budget Account Noted. Uh, six A, Resolution, authorize to revise the project description for capital budget account zero nine two zero six two one zero five seven 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 C zero six six two. Current funding for building programming phase and design options proposed funding for, for building the programming phase and design options and property acquisition. Uh, this project was approved in fiscal year two thousand twenty with a budget of four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Uh, no actuals to date. Uh, item six B, authorize to revise the project acquisition for capital budget account noted. Current, uh, Beldon Avenue Library Expansion Architectural Services Proposed. Beldon Avenue Library Expansion Architectural Services and property acquisition. Uh, this project was approved in fiscal year two thousand twenty-one with a budget of one million, five hundred and seventy dollars. Uh, no actuals to date. Item number C. Recreational Park and Cultural Affairs. Uh, authorize the Mayor to enter into an agreement with Norwalk Hospital Foundation for the Use of Cat Pasture Beach and immediate surrounding grounds for their Whittingham Cancer Center Walk and Run Event to be held on Saturday, September thirty, two thousand twenty-three from seven thirty AM to twelve PM. Uh, set up from six AM and a tear down by four PM. Approximately twelve hundred and fifty people. Number two, authorize the Mayor to enter into an agreement with Alzheimer's Association Connecticut Chapter for the Use of Cat Pasture Beach and immediate surrounding grounds for their walk to end Alzheimer's event to be held on Sunday, October eight, two thousand twenty-three from eight AM to twelve PM, set up at five thirty AM with a tear down by one PM, approximately twenty-four hundred people. Number three, authorize the purchasing agent to issue a purchase order in the amount not to exceed sixty, uh, six thousand, nine hundred and ninety-three dollars and forty-four cents for the purchase of forty-eight in-ground garbage receptacles from Cybercheck Waste Reduction LTD, project number four-two-seven-six, account noted. Uh, authorize the Mayor to enter into a contract with uh, a flawless uh, for the installation of forty-eight in-ground garbage receptacles for an amount not to exceed seventy-one thousand. for an amount not to exceed seventy-one thousand one hundred and eighty-one dollars. Account noted. Authorize the Director of Recreation of Parks to issue change order to issue change order to a flawless for the installation of forty-eight in-ground garbage receptacles in amount not to exceed fourteen thousand two hundred and thirty-six dollars and twenty-two cents. Account noted. Authorize the purchasing agent to issue a purchase order for the sale, source, purchase, and installation of a new playground for Cranberry Park in in an amount not to exceed one hundred ninety-two thousand dollars, one hundred ninety-two thousand two hundred ninety-one dollars and fifty cents of the OmniA, O-M-N-I-A Partners Agreement. Account noted. Authorize the Director of Recreation of Parks to issue a change order in an amount not to exceed eighteen thousand eight hundred and fifty dollars for the sole source purchase and installation of a new playground for Cranberry Park. Account noted. Authorize the purchasing agent, I'm sorry, number six, authorize the purchasing agent to issue a purchase order for the state for the sole source purchase of a Freightliner M-two-one-oh-six plus from Freightliner Hartford off the state of Connecticut, the DAS Contract Number fourteen PSX zero-two-three-nine in an amount not to exceed one hundred ninety-two thousand, one hundred ninety-two thousand two hundred and six dollars and twenty cents. Account noted. Authorize the purchasing agent, number six A, authorize the purchasing agent to issue a change order for the sole source purchase of a Freightliner M-two-one-oh-six plus from Freightliner Hartford off the state of Connecticut, the DAS Contract fourteen PSX zero-two-three-nine in an amount not to exceed nineteen thousand two hundred and twenty dollars. Account noted. Item D, Land Use and Building Management Committee. One A, authorize the purchasing agent to issue a purchase order for GA Fleet Associates Inc. for the purchase of two new condensing boilers for Ben Franklin Center for a total not to exceed seventy-seven thousand six hundred and thirty dollars. Funds are available from account noted. One B, authorize the Office of Building Management to issue increases to the purchase order for a total not to exceed three thousand eight hundred dollars. Account noted. Two A, authorize the mayor to execute an agreement with Universal with with Universal Building Services LLC to provide labor to install two boilers at the Ben Franklin Center for a total not to exceed fifty-eight thousand six hundred and forty-three dollars. Account noted. If anyone else would like to step in and read something.
You're doing great. Keep it up.
I'm not sure.
Whoever's really good at this, you might talk to him.
Okay, next item. I believe two A still on consent. Authorize the Office of Building of Building Management to issue change orders on contract for a total not to exceed five thousand five hundred and sixty-four dollars. Account noted. Item six, authorize the City of Norwalk.
No, I'm sorry. Item five.
Five, thank you. Approve the Design Services contingency for Peter Justoffy Associates Architectural Design Services Contract for the Cranberry Park Gallagher Mansion Improvement Project for a total not to exceed forty-five thousand dollars. Funds are available from the state DECD grants. City account noted. I believe six A is on consent. Is that correct?
Correct.
Yes, I'm sorry, six, one through five are on consent. So author, I'm sorry, authorization number six, the City of Norwalk is hereby authorized to purchase, acquire, and or take the properties listed below and further that the mayor or his.
Excuse me, excuse me, Ed. Item six is on off consent, so.
Oh, item six is off consent.
It's off consent, so now you're under public works.
Okay, good. Well, that makes my job easier. All right, public works. Item E, number one, authorize the mayor to execute an agreement between the City of Norwalk and John Turner Consulting, Inc., resulting from project four three zero eight, request for qualifications, pavement, design, and construction services for pavement engineering and consulting services in connection with the pavement management program. The agreement is to establish a three-year, but a three-year base period with two one-year options and an annual not to exceed two hundred and fifty thousand dollars per year. Numerous accounts noted. Two A, authorize the mayor to, it says Harry, the mayor. Well, it says it twice.
Harry the mayor.
To execute, to execute an agreement with the Grasso Companies LLC for purchasing project four three one zero MP twenty twenty-three hyphen five pavement management program for a sum not to exceed six million three hundred and thirty-one dollars, I'm sorry, six hundred and fifty-seven dollars and fifty cents with the option to extend the agreement for two additional terms of one year, several accounts noted. To be authorized, chief of operations and public works to execute to execute orders on contract with the Grasso Companies LLC for purchasing project four three one zero PM twenty twenty-three hyphen five pavement management program for a sum not to exceed six hundred and thirty-three thousand one hundred and sixty-five dollars and seventy-five cents. Numerous accounts noted. Item number three. Technical correction of the Common Council Action of August eighth twenty twenty-three from item seven B nine to authorize the mayor to execute a First Amendment to the Woods Men's and Boys Clothing Contract dated July twenty-third, twenty twenty-one for project number forty-eight-seven for a sum not to exceed twenty-five thousand dollars for fiscal year twenty twenty-three, twenty-four with an option to extend for two additional terms of one year each. Account noted. I believe with respect to item F. Number one, I believe will be tabled or has been tabled.
Right, so there's consent to table to the next meeting.
Okay, so so item one, there's a consent to table. Item number two, authorize the mayor to execute an agreement with Tri-State LED for thirty-six thousand two hundred and seventeen dollars and forty cents to upgrade the electrical fixtures in the island adjacent to Maritime Aquarium. Account noted. Number three, authorize the mayor to execute an amendment to the CDM Smith Agreement to include an additional twenty-seven thousand one hundred and fifty dollars for the Hamilton Avenue staircase. Account noted. Number four, authorize the mayor to execute a contract with You Are Not Alone Murals Purpose Projects and Why in an amount not to exceed twenty-five thousand dollars to install a mural located on Brian McMahon High School as approved by Norwalk Public Schools Facilities and Administration. Accounts noted. And item number five, authorize the mayor to execute a contract with ARC Sound Stage Lighting LLC to install and produce stages and lighting and secure entertainment for the City of Norwalk Night Fair on Washington Halloween Event in an amount not to exceed seventy-five thousand dollars via sole source procurement. Accounts noted. I believe that is the end of the consent calendar.
Job well done, Councilmember Camacho. Just one item. Was item seven under public safety read?
Yes.
Yes, but I I don't know if it was read.
Oh, I see. I may not have read that, actually. That's true. Let me go back and read that. That was originally, I believe, off.
On the public safety, item seven is on consent, so I think you read that, so if you can.
I appreciate that. Thank you. Authorized the number seven, authorize the Police Chief James Walsh to execute any and all of documents and agreements as may be necessary to implement the fiscal year twenty twenty-three CT DOT Drug Recognition Support Grant, DRE. I apologize.
Thank you again, Councilmember Camacho. So you've heard the reading of the consent calendar. I'll call for the question. All those in favor show by a sign of eye or raise a hand. All those opposed have the same right. Any abstentions? The motion passed. Consent calendar is approved. Back to you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Burnett. Well done, Mr. Camacho. I'll see if I I'll see if I've got it right now. So I believe it's items seven A five, Ms. McMur, am I correct?
Yes, that is correct, Mayor. Thank you. Seven A five has authorized the purchasing agent to issue a purchase order for the renewal of a one-year contract to commence on October first, two thousand twenty-three and expire on October first, two thousand twenty-four in the amount of two hundred and forty-eight thousand seven hundred and forty-eight dollars for the employment of two full-time clinicians as part of the Norwalk Police Department's Behavioral Health Unit to Recovery of Network Programs, Inc. of Shelton, Connecticut. Number noted. I would like to move this item and speak to it briefly.
Ms. McMur, move the item, and you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. So we started the Behavioral Health Unit with these clinicians almost a year ago, and there was a lot of discussion around that at the time, and what it offers both to our police department and our community is a mental health resource, but also it enlists social workers to go out into situations that are not really able for enforcement. They are mental health cases, people who are struggling, and these clinicians can help aid and follow up with these people that need other resources and help and not enforcement. So I think it's been a wonderful addition to the police department, and I really am proud to see this move forward. I'd like to turn it over to Chief Walsh, who's joined us tonight. If you'd like to add anything, please do so, and he's available for any questions on this item.
Thank you, Councilwoman McMur. Yes, the Norwalk Police Department's Behavioral Health Unit, which began in two thousand twenty-two, has been an overwhelming success in providing much-needed services to the Norwalk community in areas of such as mental health, substance abuse, and supports members of the Norwalk community facing a broad spectrum of emotional and social disorders in their daily lives. The main goal in all police departments' behavioral health unit is to provide a resource for community members who need these services for a first point of contact while directing calls for service away from traditional law enforcement resources. To date, since October two thousand twenty-two, the Behavioral Health Unit has opened up two hundred and ninety-three cases. Any further questions, comments? Seeing none, I don't believe. Oh, Mr. Meek.
Yeah, the reason for pulling off consent. So these were grant-funded when we hatched them, and as I recall, a year ago we were looking to secure more grant funding to continue the positions. I see tonight it's that didn't seem to happen. What what efforts were made? Why why could we not get additional grant funding for these? Thanks.
We work with the grant coordinator at City Hall, and Lieutenant Ronzinski, who works on our professional standards, has scoured some of the grants specifically written, and sometimes they are so narrow, the way that they are written, that we did not fit into the guidelines of any grant applications, but we are continually scouring Department of Justice and other federal sources for appropriate funding for our Behavior Health Unit. In this past grant cycle, we were unable to secure any, but we will continue to look for grant funding.
Thank you. And just a short follow-up on that. So these two new full-time headcounts are what? What bargaining unit do they belong to?
They're outsourced. They they're not actually employees of the City of Norwalk or outsourcing their employees of the recovery network.
Okay, so contract. Thank you.
Yes. Any further discussion or comment? This is Josie Eckner.
Just to follow up on that, Chief Walsh, I know that we had hoped, based on the experiences and Stanford, that over time these clinicians would help reduce repeat calls and other expenses. So could you comment a little bit on the department's experience in terms of our our hope for long-term cost savings from having these clinicians available?
Ye- yes, and an efficiency variable. It creates more patrol time for officers, so they don't have to respond to these kind of calls, the Behavioral Health Unit calls. We actually assigned a full-time patrolman in there, and we Sergeant Galino was in there. She recently got promoted. She's now in training. So that freed up a administrator or supervisor to do more administrative works, and now we have a specially-trained patrolman. So that was cost savings right there is due to the fact that we've been able to place someone in there that's more appropriate for the the work, and he comes with a vast background of social work, and he's perfectly fitted for the job. At the end, towards the end this year, we plan to do a full study. We wanted to give it one year of data since we started mid-October last year and and get those data points to see where our calls for service for emotionally disturbed and other police assists have dropped since we've implemented that program. So i-in many ways, I've noticed myself just monitoring the radio on a daily basis, our calls for service have stopped in the regular patrol division, and they step up and they self-initiate, or they follow up to prevent many calls of service that even coming up during when they're not there. They take care of them during the regular working hours, so they don't come in at eight o'clock at night or midnight and other hours during the the tour of duties.
That's really terrific to hear. Thank you. I'm really pleased with what you've been reporting about the progress of this program. It seems like it's a real benefit for the citizens and for the department. So thank you.
Further comment or discussion?
I had one one question.
Mr. Frayer.
On the two hundred and forty-eight thousand, that's a contract for one year?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so this, what would you if we if we backed out the the police personnel that are stepping in full-time on this? What would that bring that down to? Would that would that reduce that? And I know where I'm going with this is that we had to get a grant in previous years to fund this. We don't have the grant money this year, but we are able to use some of our own people to fill in the gap. So that two hundred and forty-eight thousand may be somewhat less of a burden on the city than than if we just didn't have the obviously, we have the grant, we'd be fine, but we don't have the grant, but that is not really a full burden of what we're we're having to pay at this point, is it?
With the assignment of one officer dedicated to the behavioral, we have to vary those costs also. So yes, this contract is specifically for the employment of the outside resources of the two social workers. So to your point, yes, there are other costs incurred for the operating cost of the Behavioral Health Unit. That would include the the cost for one patrol.
Thank you.
Mr. Goldstein.
Just to clarify, and forgive me because I just don't remember this off the top of my head. At this current point, the department has, if I'm not mistaken, is it one and a half full-time clinicians, or has it been two for a while?
Right now. We were one and a half. The red recovery program had employed a part-time worker that was going four hours in Stanford and four hours in in Norwalk, because they were actually giving a little bit more than what their initial contract had provided. So they were they were giving us a little bit more services than their initial contract had written. And so we had expanded. We saw the the benefit of expanding the program, and this was our proposal to to probably two will suit the city's needs perfectly with with Officer Comer's assignment in there. So to your point, yes, we did have one and a half, which started in January.
I think that what's so important about what you, you know, you said before, and I think in response to Councilmember Nijolski-Eichner's question, is the net benefit that they do provide to the city of that, even in an upgrade to one and a half to two cost savings, the officer time savings, and frankly, the expertise that these people bring really do provide a humongous net benefit, and we can talk about this in terms of clinical, in terms of an economic benefit or 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 not, but really, it's the programmatic benefit and the benefits for our citizens that should be the primary driver for an item like this. But really, it's the programmatic benefit and the benefits for our citizens that should be the primary driver for an item like this. Uh, I wholeheartedly support this program. I think this is now the third time, um, that we have voted, um, that we're voting on the continuation of this program, um, if I'm not mistaken. And I, I think this is a enormous benefit to the city, and we shouldn't be saying, unless the data provides different, which does not seem to be the case, there's no reason why we shouldn't be putting our full weight behind this.
Thank you. Further discussion, Ms. McMur?
Uh, I don't want to beliger the point, but I just want to, um, say that I fully support this program. It was something that I talked with, um, the chiefs at the time that I joined the council two years ago, almost. One of the first conversations we had, um, the number of calls that they were getting, not only to the police station, but their own personal residence from people who need assistance was staggering. And I think that that was really, um, the motivation for us moving forward with this program. We did have a very frank discussion last time when we voted on it, and we had the grant money that that might not come to fruition this next year. And I think with all of the good work that has been done and all of the data, and I think we'll do a deep dive into the data now that it's been about a year, um, in Public Safety Committee, um, to really go over how this is benefiting not only the police department, but the community as a whole. I think with everybody struggling with mental health issues, our youth, our grown-ups, everybody's really going through a lot in the last few years. I think that this is more important than ever, and so I fully support it.
Further comment, discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Opposed? Mr. Meek is opposed. Abstentions? Motion carries. Had a, uh, guess it's appropriate. I just got a, uh, an update on the election, the primary. Did you all get it? Okay. Uh, next, I believe it's item seven A eight?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Authorize the purchasing agent Sharon Connors to issue a purchase order to Roberts Chrysler of Meriden, Connecticut, for the purchase of two two thousand twenty-three Dodge police sedan package vehicles under the collective purchasing of the State of Connecticut government contract pricing for an amount not to exceed seventy-two thousand nine hundred and ninety-six dollars. Account number noted. I would like to move this and, um, open it up for questioning if anybody has any for Chief Walsh.
Thank you. Mr. Cur has moved it. Any com- any comments or questions? Ms. Najoski, Najoski Eichner.
I have no questions for the chief. Um, I appreciate his tolerance, as I have raised this issue to him, um, innumerable times. And I do merely want to make clear that I am not singling out the police department on the electric vehicle issue. It is an issue that we citywide have to address. It merely comes up more often in the police context because the police buy more vehicles, uh, or more standard-sized vehicles, I should say. Um, but, you know, Mr. Mayor, as I'm on record saying, I think it's time for us to have a comprehensive plan for our whole fleet. It will not happen quickly, but it is something we need to have in place so that we can begin the, um, conversion to electric and the implementation of that plan and take advantage of the grant funds as. So I look forward to the work on that. And thank you very much.
Any further comment or discussion? Ms., uh, Shanahan.
Um, not to belabor it, but I joined Ms. Eichner and, uh, Jessica Knight, uh, Eichner. Oh, my God, we all have.
Further discussion or comment? Seeing none, all in favor? Opposed? So we have three opposed. We have Mr. Meek, Ms. Shanahan, and Ms. Najoski Eichner. So the motion carries. Thank you. Next, I believe, uh, item seven A nine. Am I correct?
Yes, thank you. Authorize the purchasing agent Sharon Connors to issue a purchase order to Fleet Auto Supply LLC for emergency lighting and outfit for two two thousand twenty-three Dodge police sedan package vehicles for an amount not to exceed twenty-six thousand. Um, account number noted. I would like to move this item and note that there is a small typo. We need to put police, a C in police there. Um, and if anybody has any questions, this is to retrofit, obviously, the cars we just voted on, so I don't think there should be much discussion.
Okay. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, all in favor? Opposed? Abstentions? They show that Mr. Meek, Ms. Shanahan, and Ms. Najoski Eichner voted in opposition? Okay, let's see what I've got here. I believe that brings us to financing claims. Mr. Burnett, is it item seven B, seven A, B, and C?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, these items are, uh, were taken off consent, uh, due to a rewording, um, of the, the items. And I'd like to read the correct wording for item seven A, which reads as follows. Resolution author- authorize the allocation of two million dollars in special capital appropriation for improvements at South Norwalk Street, excuse me, South Main Street, Meadow Street, Wilson Avenue Intersection A, one million dollars for intersection traffic improvements to be allocated to TM NP, and B, one million dollars for intersection flood improvements to be allocated to DPW. This capital appropriation shall be funded from two million dollars of authorized but unissued general obligation bonds or notes of the city. The two million dollars of bonds or notes of the city shall be issued in accordance with the provisions and terms set forth in the original bond resolutions that authorize the issuance of bonds or notes of the city. I'd like to move this item with the correct, uh, wording of the resolution.
Hey, Mr. Burnett has made, uh, a correction to item seven A. Is there any comment or question? All in favor of item seven A as corrected? Opposed? Abstentions? Show that Mr. Meek is opposed? Mr. Burnett?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item seven B should read as follows. Approve the deauthorization of one million dollars from free balance in the Ponys Ridge School Improvement Project Capital Budget. Account number as noted, zero nine one eight five zero one zero five seven 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 C zero six zero eight.
A- any questions or comment? Seeing none, all in favor? Opposed? Abstentions? Mr. Meek is opposed. Uh, also, um, please note that, uh, Councilman David Hugelmann joined the meeting at seven fifty-four P M. Item seven A C, uh, seven C.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The item should read as follows. Approve the deauthorization of one million dollars from free balance in the Jefferson School Improvement Project Capital Budget. Account number zero nine two zero five zero one zero five seven 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 C zero six one nine.
Hey, Mr. Burnett has moved the item. Any comment or questions? Seeing none, all in favor? Opposed? Abstentions? Please note that Mr. Meek has voted in opposition. That brings us to, let's see here. Item wow, seven D, three B, I believe. Ms. Smith?
Three A and.
Three A, okay.
And B, I believe I can move them.
Three A and B. Oh, that's right. I had crossed. Right, okay. Three A and three B.
Authorize Mayor Harry W. Rilling to execute an agreement with HB Contractor Corp. for the police headquarters' men's shower room renovation project for a total not to exceed one hundred fifty-two thousand, four hundred dollars. Count number noted. And three B, authorize the Office of Building Management to issue change orders on contract total not to exceed fifteen thousand, two hundred and forty dollars. Account number noted. If I may move that, uh, Mr. Mayor, and just make a brief comment?
You have the floor.
Um, these, um, showers, um, although the police station is not all that old, uh, these showers receive, uh, significant use. There's only a few showers in, in that room, three or four, is my understanding. Uh, the heavy use is twenty-four, seven, three hundred and sixty-five days a year. Uh, there's a, a lot of water that goes through that, uh, those showers, and there is some seeping that has caused, uh, some, quite a bit of damage. And so, um, they really need, um, to, uh, to renovate this.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. Any discussion or comment? Mr. Meek?
I see Alan's here. Um, so the building's eighteen years old. Alan, I'm, I'm concerned that, you know, what, uh, why do we think this was underdesigned in the first place? Like, we're, and I know some of us were back there then, but, um, clearly shortcuts were taken, right, on design and quality, and it just gives me a lot of pause when I see us keeping the, um, the same number for Norwalk High from four years ago. It just feels like we're gonna, we're gonna be replacing stuff in there in eighteen years. Well, and I'm also hearing anecdotally that there's a lot more problems with the police station than are being advertised, um, in terms of shoddy construction, quality, and durability. If you could comment on any and all of that, I appreciate it. Thanks.
Um, I think first of all, with the shower, it's very typical for a design team when they design, design the, the back, um, the shower and stuff, that they, we could say a wet wall. So usually, they kind of line, like shower heads one after the, uh, one shower, so one after the other. I think the problem here is that when, when, when the shower head is facing the, uh, against one wall, and the spray comes out at the opening, I think a lot of, a lot of it is just upgrading and you use a, um, you know, when you pull the shower, it's a hundred percent tight. So water comes out and, and gets in the floor outside and becomes a problem. So it's, it's, uh, in a way, you're right. I mean, it is a design. Um, the design could be better if, uh, you put in a wet wall, I mean, on a sidewalk, but it, uh, again, the, the design team at that point didn't, didn't consider that. So it's one of those things that, uh, could we do better? Like, we could do better next time. So it's part of a, uh, uh, learning curve, if that's what it is. Um, the other thing is, uh, in, in terms of global, globally, where there are, uh, building has issues. I don't know of that many issue. I think we are having some mechanical issue, but the building is about twenty years, so twenty years now. I mean, I think we started this around two thousand, um, two thousand two or so, and we finished at two thousand three or so kind of thing. Um, so it is about twenty years. So mechanical, mechanical system go, it's, uh, we began to see failures. So it's not in today's mechanical system and its technology behind it. Twenty years, it's, in the old days, we buy a boiler, it lasts us thirty-five years. But today's, uh, mechanical equipment, it doesn't get that long. It's probably like twenty, twenty-five year. And, um, um, better technology doesn't make things last longer. So it's, uh, it's kind of sad to say, but at the same time, it's true. The technology always changes. It's out of, uh, you know, out of, uh, outdated and all that other stuff. And then your services, the cost is high, and maybe can't get parts, so we end up buying new equipment. So overall, I think the building is holding up well. Uh, I don't know where, uh, who indicated this problem. I know we, we have some mechanical issues, and, uh, and we start replacing the equipment. It's just part of the life cycle of the building. Uh, we have a couple of roof leak which we've, we fixed, but then, you know, the roof is twenty years old, so we have roof leaks. It's not unusual, and we just manage those issues as they come up. Um, structurally, there's no problem. Uh, the building facade don't have any problem. Uh, electrical system, I didn't hear of any issues. But I think in the future, in the next five years, you're gonna begin to see other things that we're gonna do, improvement to the buildings. But it's just really a, a life cycle kind of thing that we're working on. So I think that's all I have to offer.
Thanks, Alan.
Thank you.
Any further comment or discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of item seven C, three, no, I'm sorry, seven, well, three B and a, three A and three B? Opposed? Abstentions? Please note that Mr. Meek voted in opposition? Motion carries. Okay, item four. Ms. Smith?
Authorize the mayor, Harry W. Rilling, to execute any and all documents necessary with EverSource Energy for a utility easement in order to provide gas service to the Parks Garage in South Norwalk at Ten Tito Court. Uh, I would like to move that item and just briefly state that, uh, we are aware that the, uh, recreational parks department has, uh, taken, um, use of Ten Tito Court. And there have been a series of numerous propane tanks that have been used, and they would like to, um, you know, improve, uh, the safety situation and, uh, putting that gas in. We have Ken Hughes here with us, um, who can speak to the item if anyone has any questions or, uh, if Ken would like to add some comments.
Hey, Ms., uh, Smith is moving the item. Any comment or questions? Mr. Meek?
Yeah, um, I'm just gonna state for the record, this is outrageous. This was, we used eminent domain, kicked a, a, a commercial property owner off a usable property. It was supposed to be a school. Then it was supposed to be, now it's temporary parks and rec storage, and now we're per- putting permanent utility lines in there. It just should be less into current and future councils. Um, be careful with eminent domain and, you know, let's, let's do what we say we're gonna do. Thanks.
Thank you. Any further comment or discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Opposed? Abstentions? Please note that Mr. Meek voted in opposition? Item six. Ms. Smith?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Authorization. The city of Norwalk is hereby authorized to purchase, acquire, and/or take the properties listed below, and further, that the mayor, Harry W. Rilling, and his designee is authorized to execute and deliver any and all agreements, documents, and other instruments necessary to purchase, acquire, and/or take such properties. Account number noted. Number one, twenty-eight Oxford Street, Norwalk, Connecticut, to provide for enhanced vehicular and student access, additional parking, and recreational and open space area for the South Norwalk School. Thirty-two Oxford Street, Norwalk, Connecticut. Number two, uh, to provide for enhanced vehicular and student access, additional parking, and recreational and open space for the South Norwalk School. Three, thirty-six Oxford Street, Norwalk, Connecticut, to provide for enhanced vehicular and student access, additional parking, and recreational and open space area for the South Norwalk School. Four, thirty-eight Oxford Street, Norwalk, Connecticut, to provide for enhanced vehicular and student access, additional parking, and recreational and open space area for the South Norwalk School. Five, sixteen Meadow Street Extension, Norwalk, Connecticut, to provide for enhanced vehicular and student access, additional parking, and recreational and open space area for the South Norwalk School. Six, a portion of real property identified as portion of parcel A to be deeded to the city of Norwalk. Area equals forty-four thousand, three hundred and thirty-eight square feet plus one point zero one seven eight six acres, and portion of lots eight and nine to be deeded to the city of Norwalk. Area equals four thousand, four hundred and twenty-six square feet plus point zero one zero one six one acres on and is shown in a certain map entitled Boundary Survey Parcel A and Lots Eight and Nine. Scale one inch equals thirty feet. Date to July twenty-seven, two thousand twenty-three, prepared by Langen, Connecticut, Inc. On file and Building Management Department of the city of Norwalk to provide for right-of-way improvements, including removing existing sightline obstructions by the modification of travel lane and reconfiguration of the intersection at the South Main Street, Meadow Street, Wilson Avenue, Meadow Street Extension, other right-of-way improvements. And seven, a portion of real property known as eleven Belton Avenue, Norwalk, identified as parcel X area, eleven thousand, two hundred and twenty-seven point six three square feet or zero point two five eight acres to be conveyed to the city of Norwalk on and is shown in a certain map entitled Map of Property five eighty-seven LLC, showing land to be conveyed to the city of Norwalk, number eleven Belton Avenue, Norwalk, Connecticut. Scale one inch equals twenty feet. Date to July nineteen, two thousand twenty-three, prepared by advanced surveying land surveyors, surveyors, on file and Building Management Department of the city of Norwalk for expansion of the Norwalk Library located at one Belton Avenue, including expansion of the existing footprint of the library, additional parking, and, uh, and/or other ancillary facility servicing the library. I would like to move that resolution and just make a brief comment, if I may.
Yes, Ms. Smith?
Um, this resolution moves forward the acquisition of property around the new South Norwalk School to assure a safe and inviting community for families to feel proud of. And also with the eleven Belton Avenue property, which allows us to improve parking access and to expand and renovate the main Norwalk Public Library for the ease and use of all Norwalkers. and to expand and renovate the main Norwalk Public Library for the ease and use of all Norwalkers.
Any further comment or discussion? Okay, seeing none? All in favor? Opposed? And abstentions? Please note that Mr. Meek has voted in opposition. Leave leave that sitting. Yes, okay. Okay. Seeing no other business to come before the council. Entertain a motion for adjournment, Mr. Meek?
I'll move to adjourn, but you brought it up, so who won your little primary there?
Oh, the little primary?
I think, yeah.
Okay, a motion to adjourn by Mr. Meek. All in favor? Opposed? We're adjourned at eight forty-four. Please note that Mr. Meek voted in favor.
What was the answer to his question, though? Is there a vote count?
I'll text you.
All right, thanks.